This conference will now be recorded.
Is it not covered all the way?
This one's blue, this one's... I didn't want to break it.
I know.
It's like super tempered.
Yeah.
Okay.
It shouldn't go all down.
Down the line.
Taking their turn.
Hey, I'll call to order the regular November 18th, 2024 council meeting. Welcome everyone. We'll rise for the pleasure of leaving.
My pleasure, ladies and gentlemen, of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, any additions or corrections to the agenda tonight?
I have an addition.
Okay.
Under presentations, we're going to do an introduction of the new fire chief.
Okay.
And then we're also going to remove citizen of the month and delay it till the next month.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
So with those corrections and one addition, you'd like to make a motion?
So moved.
Motion's been made and is your second. Oh, second, second by Councilor Webb.
Councilor Webb?
Aye.
Councilor Ash?
Aye.
Mayor Hobart?
Aye.
Councilor Norman?
Aye.
Councilor Wagner?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, with that being said, moving right into presentations. So I think we're honored tonight to have our new fire chief. So you want to come forward, Greg?
Good evening, councilors, staff, guests here. I'd like to introduce myself. Some of you have known me. I've been with Dale for actually quite a while now. He's a friend of my father's, in fact. My name's Greg Brody and I am the newest fire chief, fortunately elected or hired as fire chief of the Vernon Rural Fire Protection District. And I am beyond thrilled, humbled, and feeling very honored to have been selected in this position. I spent a career working for the fire department down in St. Helens. I retired. I can tell people on the day I was eligible, I retired from there and I just cruised out of the business. And I worked for several years as the fire chief in Westport. And then June, I said, well, I'm really going to retire this time. And I got a phone call from someone in Vernonia and they said, hey, we're kind of needing a fire chief up here. All right, let's go. I'll talk about at least. And all right. So I want to take up to a few time. I just wanted to put a name, face to the name that you might see. Scott's got something coming out, I think, a little bit here. He was at our last board meeting where I got sworn in. But I want to tell you that I'm not focused at all on the past. That's at least my focus. I think it's important to remember history. I think it's important to honor the history, honor the people and things that have happened with Vernonia Fire Department, I will. That's a massive part of it right there in the back of the room. But I don't want to get focused on the past. All I want to do is focus on the future. I can think back at a time not too far in the history of Vernonia where it was very obvious that there was this major rift between Vernonia Fire and Vernonia Police. And the police kind of represent the city. And from my understanding and talking with people though, that rift is gone. And so all I want to say is that being part of the emergency services in the Vernon area is something that we can't do alone. The city police can't do alone. The city services can't do alone. So all I want to say is that whatever kind of partnership we have, I want to make sure that that is kept very healthy, expanded upon as needed, work together. That means training together. That means making sure that we're communicating, things like that. That's exactly why I'm here. I am going to go to the fire city council meeting every so often. If you have any questions that you guys might have, any concerns? I want to make sure that line's open. I haven't yet had a chance to meet you yet, Josette, but I understand you're our neighbor.
Oh, okay.
We're good through our glasses, small town.
Yeah, right.
But I just wanted to, like I said, I just wanted to introduce myself. Let you guys know that I'm, I want to continue to work towards really good relations. And then when the next big flooding event happens, I'm just going to say it, we all know it's going to happen, that as long as, as long as we have, you know, a good formulation of a plan, which I want to work on and see what we have done, get something together. So when the next big event happens that we're all on the same page and we can work together to make things, make things as easy, as easing as possible for Vernonia. That's about it. I am technically a half-time fire chief. I don't work full-time. I live full-time in Clatske, Connecticut. You're not going to see me on the vast majority of the calls. That's what I have my staff ordered to do. If it is something major, I will come up and I trust my guys. I train guys in Dallas. I train them to handle things. And we're getting ever-increasing volunteer ranks, which is important to all of us, that we increase our volunteer ranks and get them trained up. So I'm very confident in the people that we have serving, at least on the fire department side, serving you guys. That's the most important thing. Any questions?
Well, we built your brand-new fire station, so you should be happy.
I can tell you, for those of you who probably saw, we're actually moving in on Friday. And we're going to spend literally like the next month, you know, having organized, working together, moving things around. We're having a pancake feed on the morning of December 14th. We're going to buy an open house. So please feel free to stop by and see your brand-new fire station. We're very proud of it. A lot of time and energy and a lot of money went into it. But we're all, we're very proud. It's a beautiful facility. And again, looking forward to having to be around long after all of this show. That's all I got.
Thank you very much.
Nice to meet you guys. All right. Any questions? Reach out to me, okay?
Thank you, Greg. And don't say the F, the flood word again.
You know, I was in Toluca in the 96 flood.
Ooh.
That was awful. And then I was, I was actually spent some time up here in 2007.
Yeah.
I'm calling you guys now. So I was, I'm well aware of everything that goes on and I know it's hard. It's really bad. I get that. But let's be prepared for it.
Yeah, you betcha.
Take care.
Thanks, Greg. Okay, any presentations tonight? I mean, councilor committee? No presentations, other than Greg.
I do have one.
Okay.
The library.
Okay, well, okay. We're, you'll write in the committee meeting reports. Go ahead, Donald.
Well, if you need to, go ahead with yours.
No.
Okay.
I have one, but I was just asking if there were any more presentation before him, so.
So they didn't get their policy on the language update done yet because one of the people was sick. They had a stuffy sleepover and they had 10 people for that. And then they had the Blue Story Time, 47 or 17 people show up for that. And then they had a partnership with Head Start and Library with the warm welcome from St. Helens Elks and gave out 27 coats. Good. So that's what I had to report.
Okay. Any other committee meeting reports?
I was sick for mine.
Well, I was, attended the senior board meeting last week and another record was sent set. The bargains on Bridge Street, they had a record month of $7,500. And they kind of attribute that to a half-price sale and they really did really well on that. They had 748 meals in October. They announced that on Christmas Day, they're having a Christmas dinner at the senior center for the public. And then they also wanted to thank staff here, Josette specifically, and Mitch in the process of repairing and replacing the oven door. So it went very, very quickly. And we discovered that we have a local vendor here in Van Dyke Appliance that really helped us out and were able to fix it. So Jack was really happy. So they wanted to pass that on to you, Josette, so. Next board meeting's December 13th. So anyway, any other committee meeting reports? Okay. Topics on the floor tonight?
I received none.
None? Okay. Consent agenda for acceptance, public works committee minutes for September 2024. Parks committee meeting minutes for September 2024.
I move to accept the consent agenda for acceptance as presented.
So moved. Your second.
Second.
Second by Councilor Norman.
Mayor Hobart?
Aye.
Councilor Norman?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Councilor Webb?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Consent agenda for approval, city council meeting minutes for October 7th, 2024, October 14th, 2024, October 21st, 2024, and finally, October 29th, 2024. Any discussion or questions for those four meetings?
I'll move to accept the consent agenda for approval.
So moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Wagner.
Councilor Ash?
Aye.
Councilor Wagner?
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor Hobart?
Aye.
Councilor Webb?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Any unfinished business? Okay, moving right along to new business. Business from the departments. Okay. Ordinances and resolutions, resolution 2024 dash 10, new and revised building fees, page 14 through 25.
Okay, so what you have for you is a resolution adopting new building fees. As I'm putting heads up and as exact as I emailed to you, these have been gone through an exhaustive process of the state to get approval for these. So while you could make changes, it would be detrimental to our program. They're in line with the state fees. Very few things have increased. Some things didn't even exist. But they're in line with the state's fees. And we also made sure that the fees were there that would cover our building officials' time to perform those inspections. So. Yeah, I will go through the whole list if that's okay, because it's so many pages.
Yeah. And we might mention that they haven't increased since 2012.
Exactly.
And that's quite a while. So it's time.
I appreciate all the hard work.
Yeah.
I know this is not easy and I don't see anything that's incredibly out of line. I was a little concerned because I know we've been talking about increasing fees and wanting to make it.
Equitable?
Equitable, but still pay for a lot. And I think y'all did a great job on that.
Thank you.
Middle ground was found. Good job.
Any discussion or questions for staff on that?
I have none.
Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion to adopt this resolution tonight?
I'll make a motion that we adopt this resolution, 2024 dash 10, new and revised building fees.
So moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Wagner.
Dale, would you like the motion to be as titled? The full title?
Then fight me better.
Okay. Are you okay?
Okay.
You'll have to read it.
Yes, that would. As titled.
Yeah.
Uh, Mayor Hobart?
Aye.
Councilor Wagner?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilor Ash?
Aye.
Mayor, who am I missing?
Norman. Aye.
Councilor Norman.
Aye.
I jumped around that time. I usually try to go one direction or the other. I got lost. Thank you. Motion carried.
Okay, any correspondence tonight? Then we'll move right in and report.
Okay, so I did get contact back from DEQ, put it in their budget to test the well. She said we were still interested. I'm like, we've just been waiting. So they're anticipating February, March testing. And then once we know how it tests, we'll know if it fits the orphan well criteria and we can get a new well. Or if it doesn't fit the criteria, they have some other programs that we could participate on our behalf to help Mary Ann get a new well there for future use, should she want to hook up to it. Because as you know, she's hooked up to her dad's old property. ODFW, I'm still, so some of you probably don't know, we, I've talked to a few of you as you popped in, but we were working with Oregon Marine Construction. They had given us a $14,000 bid. And then I got an email from her saying they wanted to tran, they were going to initiate a requirement for our docks to go down to their property, be offloaded and test floated, then reloaded and brought here. And I said, well, that's a new requirement. And I said, they're coming from Woodland, Washington, going to Woodburn and then going back to Vernonia. That seems like a real long way around. That wasn't freight we anticipated. So she said, well, it's a requirement because we want to make sure that the docks float or how they're designed. I said, well, it feels like you're holding us hostage because you know we're in a tight spot. She said she'd send me the updated bid when they got it done. They got it done. It was $10,000 more dollars. So I said, yeah, well, we're at an impasse. We cannot afford that. So I contacted the dock building company. They gave me three more names. Of course, winter is the dock building season. Who knew? So none of them can help us till spring. So now I'm waiting for them to send me the specifications to get the weights to see, do we just do it ourselves? We've done a lot of those big projects, types of installs or demos ourselves. So once I know the weight, I can see if a piece of equipment's available, what the cost of that is. And then I did put a call into two scuba diving schools. Are there people that kind of moonlight as certified scuba divers that could chain it for us? Because talking with Dale, we've kind of logisticed out all the things we'd need to have and how we may be able to do it. We'll just need to wait and see what the cost. I think it's going to be well under 24 grand to get a big old piece of equipment, hire an operator and hire a scuba diver. So that's where we're at with that. And the only hiccup is, is that ODFW is holding 10% of the grant value as retainage until they're installed. We've already paid that out to the dock company. So we're just kind of hanging there, waiting for the retainage to get released when we install the docks. The ADA project, I was on the weekly meeting again. They're still in Rainier. They still, it looks like they're not going any faster than being here in March. But they said, as they get closer to complete, they'll come out and do site visits here and kind of start talking to Jeff and the guys. As you remember, we paid for the conflict work. We are not having our public works held hostage all summer. And we paid that deposit. And there's a couple of those items that when they get on site, we're going to challenge because we know they're not our infrastructure and we don't want that taken out of our deposit. So little work to do there, but they'll be here in March. North South Louisiana, when I wrote this, we were waiting for that compaction roll test and that has passed. So that was the last component of the north-south connection, other than they were doing a little bit of cleanup. There's a few big chunks of asphalt that need to get picked up, just little honeydew stuff. The VPD union negotiations, I contacted them again. I still did not have a response. I don't know if it's just, it does not pass his brain when he's here on duty because the union, Kendall is the union rep for the police officers. So I said, get back in touch with me or I'm going to really have to call the union rep, which is none of us because we need to get this dealt with. So hopefully we can get that buttoned up. CDBG sewer, springboard sewer project. So when I was writing this, the auger was being removed out of the boring tube. And they were anticipating pushing pipe on Thursday, which they've been doing. They thought it would take one to two weeks to complete that section. They had already kind of just doing cleanup to finish the weed section. And then once the pipe is in the boring line, then the last connection will be the manhole in the middle of Hawkins parking lot to the manhole that's just across Mr. Weller's field. And then everything will go live. And then the last project element that we're waiting on is the final generator won't be done till around Christmas time. So if you drive by, you'll see there's a generator sitting up on the pump station with wheels. It's just a temporary one. We're borrowing from Power Systems Plus till our new generator gets here. And then we will be skipping the construction meeting that's slated for Thanksgiving. None of us wanted to come in on Thanksgiving. And so we won't meet again until the 5th. DEQ upcoming permit, I sent you guys the information about the permit and our old one. So now we're in the 35-day period where the public has time to review and comment on what DEQ is allowing us to do within our wastewater discharge permit. That's a 35-day process. And once we pass that, they don't believe anybody will comment anything that will change the parameters of the permit because it's not contentious at this point, what we are allowed to do. Then they'll finalize the permit. It won't be issued probably until the 2025, they're thinking January. And then that will be good for a five-year period. I did talk to them about PFAS and the forever chemical and how, because that regulation comes down in 2027 through 2029, which will be when we're still in this permit. And they have not even figured out how they will address those regulations. So we'll just stay with our permit. They may do an addendum or some documentation of what we're required to do with the new regulations for treating for PFAS. Because it will be a regulation in 2029. So, and that's all I had. Do you guys have any questions for me?
So just one correction.
Oh, on the bottom down there in the.
City council meeting.
Yeah.
It said in November.
It should have been December.
Yeah, no big deal.
I looked at that today and I was like, what the heck? It's out of order even.
I thought, did I miss a workshop or something?
Top says November 12th. So we're doing well.
Right.
Up here, I mean.
That's when I wrote it. It auto, it auto fills when you hit header that Ben built. So it usually does it on the day I write it.
I have two questions.
Sure.
And they are both things I thought we were getting staff reports on this month. So one was the signage at the parks and one was the campground timeline.
Yeah.
I thought we're coming this month, but then we missed the first meeting.
Right. So I have them on the schedule for the second because we, I had, I didn't have them done by the time this thing went out.
Okay.
My report.
Parks is meeting this Wednesday.
Right.
If I come in in the next couple of days.
Yeah, I can give you an update on where the. And that I sent the sign that Ben had said, the requesting people not smoke near, you know, keep an arc and anything. So I've been in touch with Columbia Public Health. Yeah.
Okay. Um, okay, I'll come in.
Yeah, come and chat.
Any other questions or?
Those are both on the, coming on the second.
Yeah. An update on the park phase one and signage with the Columbia County Public Health.
Thank you, Josette. Right here in Congress. Any? Anything?
Well, three of us sitting here, plus the new councilperson, attended the workshop today. So up to snuff on the meeting, having our requirements to be a councilperson.
Good. Good meeting?
Yes.
Good.
It was a training.
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 Because she would have had to know, she would have had to notice it had it been a meeting.
Training session.
Good. Looks like they're, could be helpful for us.
Oh, yeah. Very good. Dale, go ahead.
If anybody's driven down though, like you see the old docks have been moved to their new homes. City crew did a great job of getting rock in there. We got them anchored up and.
I was going to search for when the legs, they should be coming any day.
The what?
Legs.
The legs? No, they're already here.
Oh, good. Okay. I didn't look on my email.
Helped him load them in the back.
Oh, good. Okay, good.
UPS guy showed up down there.
The chance to look at where they're at.
So I think we still got some finished work to do. There'll probably be at least another load of rock on each one. And then probably some dressing rock probably on top of that. I noticed that one jetty we built is going to settle a little bit. Anticipated that. So, yeah, and there are already people getting out on them, using them already. So pretty well received.
Someone kept taking the caution tape off of one of the closed accesses.
Yeah.
Like happened a few days in a row, but it seems like it hasn't been happening.
Yeah.
Somebody, somebody's been tying it back together too.
Yeah. Down and then fixed. And then the last few days it's been up. So I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah, they don't want to go, the.
The rain.
Yeah, the rains keeping the people that want to rip.
Yeah, it's just.
Only the diehards are at the lake in the rain. Yeah, fishing.
Lake pumps are winterized for the winter. We got city crew helped pull the screens. They're at my, in my shop. Get rebuilt again. And then I did a walk through the McNair Forest and we had 94% survival rate.
Good.
Looking really, really good. We've, we're going to order 100 ponderosa to replace any of the dead ones. And then going to stick probably quite a few of them up there. Aura. Cedars are really struggling up there in that open ground. It just, yeah, I think we needed more shade around for them to try to take off. But so I'll probably be replacing those or have the school kids, forestry class, put those in. So we're looking pretty good there.
Good. Thank you, Dale. Anybody else? Well, I think we're ready for an action item summary then.
Well, we don't have anything. So then I'm bringing the two perks thing.
On December 2nd.
Sure. Sure.
Are we doing two citizens of the month in December then, or you're just dominoing?
Um, it's up to you guys, actually, I don't care. Who would it be? It's you. Donald and who?
I was wondering, because I think I'm usually after Donald, but I don't know that for sure. Well, if that's the case, then it would only be fair for your last one, right? Let me look, I actually can pull it up from my desktop now. Correct. Okay. So, yeah, we'll do two, if that's all right with you guys. Will you be prepared for the first meeting?
I will.
And she can do the second? Second meeting? Good.
If there's nothing else, I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight, and I'll adjourn the meeting at 7:00 PM, meeting adjourned.